All right. I'll call it in order. Mike?
Here.
Rick?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
John?
Here.
Doug is excused, he's got to work the... Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item three, the consent agenda. Any changes?
Nope.
Do I have a motion?
You can say that again.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Thank you. Item four, public input. This is the time and place for discussion items not already on the agenda with a time limit of three minutes each. Anyone? Anyone? Okay. Moving on to five A, budget presentation. Rhodes?
All right, everybody has these on your packet, correct? I don't have any.
It's in the...
It's on the computer.
Yeah, it's on the computer. No, I have just seen it.
I'll just have it in your packet on the...
This is your packet.
I asked for a packet, I need a packet because I won't pass.
This is a packet.
That is a packet.
How did the computers create? Were we doing roads?
Yeah, roads.
We're on roads.
So off the top, don't worry about the revenues on any of these because some of these are going to fluctuate. This is just best estimate based on the current road use tax that comes in. If you go down to expenditures, really nothing has changed per se. We've just kind of gone through, especially like vehicle operations, vehicle repair, gas and electric, all that stuff, you just kind of have to see where it's at so far. This sheet here is through six months approximately. So if you can see actual year-to-date, we've kind of seen where we're at and just adjusted the numbers accordingly, kind of essentially doubled them to know where we're going to be at. So everything's pretty close to where it was last year. You'll notice one of the big ticket items under repair maintenance and utilities is street maintenance supplies and you can see the notes down there, that's going to be the salt and sand that we get for the streets. If you go down to the next portion, contractual services, that's going to be your engineering expense. If we do any type of rental or leasing of equipment that we may not have to do a job. A big one here, street maintenance, this will be seal coating and crack sealing. I still left a note in there for the Highway 30 repairs even though that's not going to be budgeted as of right now. We did talk to B&amp;K and their bid's still aren't very good. Dave, you have any update on that at all?
We have a project that we bid next month and that will give us pretty good indication of what the asphalt prices are. That's in the...
Okay. So if you recall, the DOT gave us that money for Highway 30. If we do get a price and they advise us to go to bid, we can adjust that accordingly with the money that's in the account for that.
Is this wishful thinking? I mean, are we looking for it to come down at some point? Is there any reason to think it's going to come down?
The chairman made adjustments after the first of the year, so if we try to bid it before we get to the end of the year, contracts are hedging. So now that we have the prices established, we should be able to identify what those are. This project that we have coming up will tell us pretty quickly whether we're competitive with the pricing or not and if it's worth us pursuing that with the contractor to try to put our project out to bid. So I'll report back once I get those bids.
Okay, thank you. But I imagine we're sitting on that million bucks they gave us.
Yep, we're sitting on the treasurer's report.
Okay.
It's in the account. All this comes out.
All right.
Everything else is just normal, just kind of seeing where we're at for the year. You see the contractual services, we actually dropped down a little bit there since we're only at 473. Minor equipment down under commodities. You can see the permanent notes that we're going to take out is the used chipper, obviously that's been purchased and the new paint sprayer which we purchased last year. One thing Travis would like to purchase is an end loader. The end loader, we had, for sauerkraut days, we rented a telescoping end loader from Rexco and we used that to move the blocks for the barricades for sauerkraut days and did it about a third of the time. With this end loader, you can obviously scoop snow, you can put a blade on it, many different things. The end goal with this is to purchase this and then trade the backhoe and the mini-hoe in on a new mini-hoe next year and those two things on the trade should equal with a new mini-hoe, so it'd become almost a dollar trade. So then you'd end up with an end loader and a mini-hoe instead of a backhoe and a mini-hoe. Just getting around the more uses with the end loader. So we did budget. We're going to try to get creative on this and pull from several different... Obviously this end loader is going to be used on streets. It's going to be used to get to the water tower, it's going to get used to the sewer plant, it's going to get used to move blocks for events for public safety. So there's many different avenues where we want to pull the money from. The bid he has right now is about 165,000. We're going to try to get one smaller than that. We're hoping 120 to 150, somewhere in that ballpark. But with the money coming out of here, there is a little bit in capital improvement, forced roads, and then we were going to pull some from water, sewer, parks and a little bit from the EMA for the festivities. So anyway, that's why that's at 65,000. If you have any questions about it, we can talk now if you want to talk to Travis for the uses or what you're thinking or thoughts on that.
Well, we actually have that covered right now. You're upgrading.
Yes, you'd be upgrading, I'm trying to get it all covered within the money that we have without going outside.
Yeah, but I'm still asking is, I mean, I'd love to have a new Corvette, but I got a 2004 Corvette. It works just fine. Do we need this?
Well, we really don't have anything, one, to move those blocks and, two, we don't really have anything. We have the Bobcat to go downtown. This would be better. You can get in and out and put a blade on it.
So basically, right now, what we're doing when we got to go onto the parking and things are wet, we end up using my personal skid loader so we don't tear up with the city skid loader because I have a track machine. This is a telescoping end loader so we can stay on the pavement and reach out 10 to 16 feet so we can stay on the hard... It's not your normal end loader, it's a telescoping end loader. So basically, like for the duration, we can reach in and grab it. I mean, right now, we're running the skid loader from one end of town to the other and the speed on that is relatively slow compared to the 20 miles an hour we can get with the end loader. We've been pushing this idea around for four years now. I mean, most communities around are going to it just for the moving of the heavier stuff that we're getting.
And you'd get a box, I mean, a normal scoop, you'd get a fork extension.
Most, so if we go to the smaller size, all of our skid loader attachments will still work on this too.
Okay.
The other, I mean, the other reason for it is, is you get the cage blade, which is a box blade, so when we're cleaning up downtown, you've got a 10-foot box blade instead of a 6-foot bucket and downtown it'd be cleaned up in a third of the time. And then you can roll out of that cage blade and then you have a 10-foot regular snow blade and continue on with the snow route.
As far as size is concerned, this is about the same size as the skid loader then?
It's a little bit, little bit bigger.
Little bigger.
Yeah, it's nothing like what our neighbor has. I mean, that thing's like a quarry end loader.
Yeah.
We're going down, I don't know if you see them like so well.
That's what I was thinking.
Yes.
I'm seeing pictures of smaller versions.
Yes.
That would be akin to that.
Yeah, the one, the bigger ones would be far more money.
It's about doing the jockey effectively and efficiently at this point.
Efficient, yes.
Yeah.
So then, the thought was then, once this gets in place, you wouldn't need the backhoe and then you could upgrade the mini-hoe by trading that in and the mini-hoe to get a new mini-hoe. And then the mini-hoe could be used, it'd be just a little bit bigger so that you can do that effectively out at the cemetery. You wouldn't need the backhoe for out there.
Okay.
Do we use the present backhoe for lunch?
The backhoe part, no. The loader part, yes. Mainly all the digging we do, we try to use the mini because it's more compact and it's less intrusive to the area. No, this is, this is the tires.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Other than that, that's, you can just see the 25,000 for capital improvement just to keep going in there for equipment. That's at the bottom there. That is pretty much it.
All right. Any other questions about roads?
No.
All right. Move on to five B, budget presentation. Water.
This one, again, we'll look at the expenditures. Everything is pretty much the same, or close to what it was last year. Again, just kind of looking at the numbers of where we're at. For instance, one example of things that have arisen, if you look down at, under contractual services, technology services expense, this is for the telemetry system and the water system. You can see that's at 5326 already, so I would head budget it to 9,000, move it from eight because obviously we're going to probably be over since this is a six-month run.
So it's telemetry, you mean the radio read?
No, this is the communications for the wells.
Oh, from the wells too?
Yeah.
Yeah. Down to minor equipment, currently budgeted 39, we bumped it back to 30. If you recall, the GPS unit is purchased out of this budget, so that's crossed off there. Again, we're going to take 15,000 for the end loader out of there.
Okay.
And then I made a note there, for new meters, it's just whenever we order new meters, about $5,000, so...
Okay.
I don't know if you have any questions on there?
Are these meters computer read?
Yeah.
Think they're running the car?
So basically, that's roughly about between water and sewer, we've split it 50/50 for the meters. That's basically the ones that we have to replace due to age.
Is the whole town done yet with radio reads?
We have, we have the rest of them, that was going to be in my spiel.
Yeah, we're like on the last page.
Yeah, 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 we're on the last. These are just replacement meters, new construction meters, just, yeah, meters that are expired due to aging but working still.
And then just one thing for probably next year, we're going to have some tower maintenance that we need to have done, so we'll try to get prepared for that and talk to Maggie from Spirit Financial. Right now, we're looking at a 1% to 2% increase in water and probably a 3% increase in sewer in July.
Okay.
Anything else with water?
Any other questions?
You said you got to make this on the water tower, what kind of payment?
It's the cleaning of, every three years they got to be cleaned.
So maybe we got a few, two?
Yeah.
About 10,000 bucks.
Won't be done this time, but just...
Who does it, sink the paint?
No, we actually have, we did dive, is what we do. They were on... They were supposed to do it this year, this last fall, and they haven't yet, so we're hoping to get it that way and then...
It's okay if you don't believe me.
Yes. You guys got anything else?
No pressure.
Anything else with that?
No, we're good, we can move on. Five C, budget presentation. Sewer.
Again, this is pretty, very similar. Water and sewer kind of go hand-in-hand, especially with the wages come out of each equally. The meters, half of it comes out of water, half of it comes out of sewer, so you'll see kind of the same thing there. If you look down under other contractual services, we do the sledge removal, it's approximately 15,000. We do that twice a year and then all pump maintenance comes out of there, so that's going to stay current. Minor equipment, one thing I did adjust on here, this was this afternoon. We ended up, if you remember, talking about we needed a sampler and we couldn't get the sampler. The company now has the parts in to repair the one that we have. So we're not going to be, we're going to fix this for probably about a thousand bucks, 1,500 versus the $8,000 new sampler. So I've lowered that down to 20,000 under minor equipment, so you won't see that reflected on yours because the pack was already put together, but... And then we're going to also use the, some money out of there for the end loader, so...
All right, so the 30 shown here is 20.
It's 20, correct. Yep. And he wants 15 for the, well, it'll be 15 for the end loader and then five for just general equipment, minor equipment needs.
Okay.
Liquid engineering.
Right. Also, just so everyone's aware, on the water, the, obviously the water main project is a whole different. It's already been proven and gone, so it's not reflected in that budget. So it's got its own account.
Any other questions on sewer? All right, we'll move on to five D, budget presentation. General.
All right, there's several of these, so we'll kind of go through. We'll start on 28. This is clerk tre- page 28, clerk treater, financial admin. This is just all of our in-house, inside city hall wages. Again, some of those are broken out into different departments. Any type of training, association dues, staff development conferences. The only thing is, I kept technology services at 6,000 is because we need to do a server update that's coming due, so I kept that at 6,000.
He was talking about staff.
Other than that, that's pretty much the same. Page 31 is legal services and attorney fees. As you can see, so far this year, we've only used 1575. We budgeted 15,000. Hopefully that stays on pace, but you never know what's going to happen, so I just budget 15 just until we have it there. City Hall building, which would be page 32. One thing you noticed in here, and I don't know what it's going to take, we did have a company come out for the windows for...
Which one?
They were leaking water. They looked at the seals, they thought the seals were good and it might be more coming up from upstairs, like in the wall, so I kept that the same price because we need to figure out what's going on there, if it is the window or what that is. So that's staying the same. Grounds maintenance and everything else, you know, the only thing I really raised there is the electric and gas. Reason for that is, that's gone up, you can see we're at 49, I raised it to 9.
That's on pace to be 22 then?
What's that?
That's on pace to be a lot more than 9, isn't it?
No, is that 49, 33?
Oh, okay.
So...
Sorry.
And on the last page, you just see the insurance expense. This is just a ballpark because our policies don't come due until March, I believe it is, so it's hard to, it's hard to know right now. So as you can see, it's just kind of generally gone, gone up, so it's just kind of ballpark, you know? Basically, it's gone up 4,000 a year and we just put that in there, 24,000 just to make sure we're covered. Other general government, this one's pretty much the same all the time. See the property tax, the history center and Lincoln Park. We got Lincoln Square Park. Non-program, this is going to be all of your permits and all your fees and all that type of stuff. And again, this is just kind of, you take the average of what's come in so far for the six months and double it. There's some refunds in there that you end up getting, but it's all little things. Transfers in, this is going to be from lost, this will be on page 38. This kind of gives you a breakdown of what we spend outbound for lost. Typically, it's been 36,000 each year for street lights, 30,000 for insurance, 3,000 we give sauerkraut days for fireworks, 4,000 for Southeastland, I believe that's after school program, 1,000 for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library and I believe they wanted that again this year, is that correct?
If, if, if. You're right, we'll do it again.
Okay. And then the emergency levy, which that fluctuates based on your max tax rate, which we'll go over at the future meeting, that's 21154. And then we'd like to, for lost, transfer in 50,000 out of lost for the telescoping end loader and then 400,000 for the sports complex. The only thing addition to here that we hadn't talked about before, if you recall, we were going to transfer the 400,000 for the Walden's and the sports complex. The only difference would be the 50,000 for the end loader. That account right now...
I thought the end loader was about 65K.
165.
A 1.
Yeah. So right now, there's quite a bit of money in there and that's why we were taking the sports complex, 400,000 out for that. So the, if you recall, the lost money came to parameters, kind of more like a community, whole entire community purchases what you want to do for that, so... And that's why you see all that stuff in there, all things that could benefit anybody in the community. Transfers out, these would be the reserve accounts for the library, EMA, fire department and parks. Christina, am I missing anything there?
Uh huh.
All right, do you want to go over TIF?
All right, moving on to five E, Tiff.
Sorry. Tiff has gotten a lot smaller than it has in years past because we have paid off two of the loans that have normally come out of there and we've also have one of the two rebates done as well, so we only have budget lines left for a rebate. And then we have the downtown rehab for 20,000 and then our bond payments are going up compared to before because that's how the breakout is now in place for those loans that we've redone over the past years. So we're looking at 192 and $1 for TIF funds, which is much nicer than what we've been sitting for the last few years for that one. And we're looking to get in about 260,000 into TIF funds and paying out about 192, so...
Any questions on Tiff? All right. Move on to, I just already did lost.
Yeah, I'll just touch on that, there, just, this kind of gives you that overall breakdown. That one was just the transfer, but it's the same thing. So basically, you can see the total amount of 524,000 to spend on...
Where are you right now?
Page, page 33, here. You're there.
I get it, I'm there. I'm there.
So you can see the, the lost is kind of interesting, obviously it just goes with the, how people spend, so it's hard to, hard to guess where you're at. You can actually see last year, we took in 438,512, but Christina, I believe there's an extra payment in there, correct?
There is an extra payment due to the COVID and all that spending. And then also this year, they have changed, instead of estimating our payments, they are waiting to give us our funds until they get the actual numbers. So we are getting more hardcore numbers and that's why we didn't move it from what we've budgeted this year because we are seeing the payments going a little lower then.
So you'll see by the end of the year, we're going to go, we're going to spend 200,000 more than we were taking in, but that account is very healthy and we need to spend some of it, so that's why the end loader and the sports complex is coming out of that.
Is there a balance in that account, is that why? It's on the treasurer's report. We didn't have that this month. We currently have enough in that account to pretty much cover what we're wanting to take out of it and that's before we even get the next six months yet.
It's pushing at 8 or 900,000.
Yeah, it's a healthy account.
Okay. All right. Any questions on lost? All right. Since we're done with all the budget presentation items, we'll move on to six A, public hearing for water main rehabilitation project. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
I'll move, second.
I have a motion, I have a second. And we'll call this.
Yes, please.
All right, then we'll call this. Mike?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
I say aye. So we're in public hearing at 7:28.
Who's up there?
Dave is up.
Give a little bit of background on this project. This is probably what we've been working on for some time, replace some smaller diameter water mains and some mains that are problematic that have frequent breaks. We have about 25 blocks of water main that we're replacing. Most of this is going to be located on Washington Street, Jackson Street, Second Street, Market Street. We've got some smaller areas that we're doing and some of the side streets as well. So we're looking at February 9th taking bids on this project, but the main purpose of this is to eliminate the smaller diameter water main. The NRG model, we will change quite a few years back and they've been pushing on us to try to get that upsize. Our smallest mains are 6-inch, that's for fire protection. So those 4-inch mains and smaller are the ones we're targeting.
What, will you be going to 6-inch?
We have 6- and 8-inch mains and then we do have some larger mains as well that we're putting in to replace. We've got some 10-inch mains that we're replacing. That's all we're, there's problems, so...
Four's going up to eight?
We do have some fours going up to eight, we have some fours going to six, yeah. So it just depends on the location, but in general, we try to target 8-inch if we can, so it does pretty well with fire protection.
That's it for a shout.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. Anything else?
No, that's it. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, but that's the general purpose of the project.
Approximately start time on that?
We leave bids in February, we're probably looking at a month delay by the time the contractor gets bonds and whatnot, so we're not going to be able to start in March, but with internal delays, it's been a little difficult to get materials on site. I would suspect we're probably looking at April and May to really be rolling on it, the network's well with the weather also.
If you recall from the last meeting, there's going to be kind of one public works group with them for shut-offs, locates, all that type of stuff. And then also... And then also, we did work with the school, and they're well aware of sauerkraut days and that type of stuff, so we're gonna navigate the project around those, those events and what have you, so.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? All right, do you have a motion to go out of public hearing?
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Motion to go out, we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All right, Mike?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
I say hi, we're out of public hearing. All right, item six B, public hearing for well number five project, do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. Sarah?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
I say hi. All right, we're in public hearing at seven twenty-eight.
As you may recall, we had an issue with our railroad well a few years back, after dam nation, and then the railroad came in and said that they were going to require us to abandon that well, we're down to two wells. This well replaced that well that was abandoned, it's our standby well, and it gives us firm capacity that needs the feet day. This is going to be located northwest corner of Jefferson Market, up in the park area, west of Niners Meadows, and it'll be a slurring well, similar to the ones we have, about four hundred feet deep. And our estimated production out of that is three hundred gallons per minute, similar to what we have out of well four. So this part of the project is just to drill the well and test the water, it won't have the well pump or the chemical feed building that goes with it, that'll be a second phase, we wanna make sure that the well water is good, and that we get good volume, that, that's enough that we can justify putting in the treatment. So, this part, bids, and we have, February ninth also, we have about a six-month process in order to get the well drilled, to get the tests back, some of those tests take about a month and a half, two months to get back to the lab, to verify that we have good water quality. So, once we get the preliminary test back, we'll be designing the chemical feed building, because that could go wherever the well goes, but it's site-specific as far as some of the building and water main. We'll have it ready to go, we'll let it forbid, and simply get test information back on this, so this part is just for the well casing, put in the ground, and then test the water quality. And I think this, this is paid for through a grant, I forget what, grant, Lynn County, Arco Funds, they allocated about a million dollars.
Another one?
Yes, so we put in an application for that, and they indicated they would set aside a million dollars for the well project. So, that should hopefully cover the entire project, but depending upon what we see here with the well, that'll tell us our next steps.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Any questions for this particular subject? Okay. Do I have a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Like.
Motion and a second. Mike?
Hi.
Rick? John?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
I say hi. All right, we are out of public hearing. All right, six C, set public hearing for proposed property tax levy for fiscal year twenty-four for February thirteenth.
So, we did this last time, however, a language in the state advises a ten to twenty-day window for posting that four to twenty, so by the date we set last time, it won't meet those standards to get to the paper, so it is in the paper, is it this week? So, I request a motion for a public hearing set for February thirteenth, which will be our next meeting.
Okay. I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for February thirteenth, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, Mike?
Hi.
Rick? John?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
I say hi. Six D, set public hearing for fiscal year twenty-four budget for March thirteenth.
Uh, they have to be done and approved by the thirty-first, this would, if we do it in the first meeting in March, that would give us an opportunity, if there's something missed, we have one more meeting in March to get it done by the day mark, so. I request a public hearing set for the thirteenth of March.
All right. I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for March thirteenth, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, Mike?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Sarah? I say hi. All right, moving on to item seven, correspondences.
Uh, nothing of this.
All right. Moving on to eight A, city engineers report.
We covered the overlay project out on Highway thirty already, and as an inch of, I'd like the council to know how those bids turn out, that'll indicate what we wanna do with that going forward, whether it's, what well for us to pursue funding that project, the other two projects I've reported on are the well project and the water main project, so. Once we receive bids on the ninth, we'll report to the council and make recommendation.
Has the Highway thirty project gone out for bid yet?
The Highway thirty project did go out for bids earlier, and we received bids that were much higher than anticipated, we had estimated that based off of work that the county was doing to the east, and when we spoke with the contractor, they thought they could hold prices, but when we let it, the prices were significantly higher, so. That's why we're sitting, waiting, in order to find out if the pricing is going to go down a little bit, looking for some competition, and also for a little bit of a break in the market, so. Should know here from this next project whether that's happening, and if it is, then we'll put it back out. We also did concrete patching as a separate bid, it was previously in that project, and the primary contractors that were interested were asphalt contractors, so some of that patching was bid pretty expensively. We pulled that out, have it done already, so we don't have that as a part of the project, and we're able to save some money, but we're still waiting for those asphalt prices to go over, but we'll put it back out.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dave. Eight B, public works director report.
Like I said earlier, we're gonna be working on the avenues to get a couple of those radio reads put in. The other thing is, I just wanna, wanna kind of touch base on is, in two thousand and ten, the city of Lisbon had about twenty-two lane miles to take care of, now we're pushing close to forty. Same with like parks, we had eleven acres that we had to own and take care of, now we're gonna be pushing close to fifty-six. So, when we talk about equipment and to be more efficient, we're, we're not the same town we were in two thousand and ten, I mean, we need to be able to, with the workforce we have, we need to be able to have the tools to do the job more efficient, and that's what we're looking to do.
Any other questions for Travis? All right. Eight C, parks and rec director report.
Don't have a whole lot, we just had our first boys basketball games on Saturday, those went very well, we have four weeks left, and other than that, I'm just doing snow removal as the snow comes down.
Thank you, sir. Eight D, police department report.
Nothing beyond what's in the report unless you have questions.
Anything, anyone? All right, thank you, Doug.
Yep.
Eight E, emeritus director report.
Nothing bad unless you have questions.
Anything? Okay. Eight F, fire chief and city administrators report.
I do not have anything fire related tonight. Administrator report, we are, we had a contractor come out to the history center to reference the caulking of the windows, so we're waiting to get a bid back from that, so I should have that for the next meeting. Been working on the budget, working with YTT, they did get a new design, we're hoping to get a new board out here, and I am hoping that we have some sort of update for bids for the ball diamonds at the next meeting, or at least the timeline of when that's gonna take place. Worked with Lynn County Building, and also working on a few nuisances here and there, and then just as a reminder, I'll be out of the office the twenty-sixth through the second. That is it.
Thank you, Brandon. All right. Eight G, council and mayor reports. Sarah, you wanna start us off?
Sure, I really don't have anything. It's Monday, it's a good day. One of my favorite days of the week.
More of that positive attitude, all right, we'll take that.
Well, it's a new week, a new day, you know, it's just a new goals for the week, it's just, it's a good, good start.
All right, thank you. John?
Food pantry, as we learned from Southeastland, it's at an all-time high in demand for food. Their twelve-month budget has already been met in seven months, and so they can use help, if you wanna help them, the best way is donate money, because they can buy food cheaper than you can at a local grocery store, plus it's a lot easier. And they need volunteers, you have a question?
No, I just got.
Friends of the Lisbon Library, we're looking for more members, we've had a couple people drop out, and due to various reasons. And we had a roundup with Gary's Foods, and we were splitting that with Melverton Library, so, but it was still very productive. That's all I have.
Thank you, John. Rick?
My God, is I just, I'm gonna say prayers, go out to the students that's lost their lives today in the school shooting in Du Bois. It was like an alternative school, we understood, so you, and as you well know, we have an alternative school here, too, downtown, so, you know, this, this violence can happen anywhere, and we're not immune from it by one day. So, if there's two dead, and they arrested the suspect, it still happens, so.
All right, thank you, Rick. Mike, you have any?
Nothing.
All right.
Pretty detailed.
I don't have any, I just had a couple of questions about some budgetary things, but I'll talk to Travis and Christina after that. So, yeah, I got nothing dug out, obviously, so. Nothing from mayor. Is there any other business? All right, meeting adjourned.